Calling call to order for the Ellisville Town Council, May 22nd, 2023. And we'll go with the prayer first. Jimmy?
Our heavenly Father, who comes before you this evening, we thank you so much for this little town we serve. We thank you for all the many blessings you bestowed on the families and that represent here this with us throughout this meeting as we make good decisions that affect the town we work for. Let's say in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Now, Chris.
A allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And hold on about 20 seconds for the roll call. Okay.
William Ellis?
Here.
Trevor Sager?
Here.
Scott Oldham?
Here, finally.
Pamela Samples?
Here.
Dan Swafford?
Here.
All right, approval of minutes for the regular meeting, May 8th, 2023.
So move.
Second. William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
All abstaining, not present.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Abstaining, whether present.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Action to pay accounts payable vouchers and payroll.
So move.
Second. William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, resolution 07-2023, Richland Senior Housing. Resolution to rescind abatement resolution. Is this you, Darla?
It is, and I would ask that the town council table this. As you are aware, the council granted to Richland Senior Housing an economic or they designated property owned by Richland Senior Housing as an economic revitalization area. And that allowed Richland to have a tax abatement. Thereafter, the town council passed an ordinance giving Richland a pilot. The project is either complete or nearing completion, and the auditor's office has asked that the town council either pass a resolution or an ordinance to clear up the matter. You can't have a pilot and tax abatements at the same time, in any event. I had drafted a resolution and passed it along to Allied and its attorney, and I received some emails this morning, and they have a different idea. And so I said I will ask the council to table it tonight. And it will be back before you if you table it at your first meeting in June.
Okay, is there council action on this?
I move to table resolution 07-2023, Richland Senior Housing.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would ask that we move the new business police officer of the year as the next agenda item.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can do that.
Thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate you moving that up.
Austin?
I present to you tonight Alvy Bohal. He's a 25-year member of the Ellisville Police Department. And I was just thinking today, 25 years ago, I had 25 years of police work. So it hit me kind of hard there for a while, but I just want to bring to your attention Alvy's wonderful work. He's indicated that probably this 2024, mid-2024, will be his last year here, last time here, which means he'll be taking off some time there prior to that. So I wanted to make sure we got him honored before he left. But on behalf of the board, Ellisville Town Board President William Ellis, Town Manager Mike Farmer, Chief of Police Jimmy Durnell, this award is being presented to you not only for your outstanding work effort in the calendar year 2022, but also for your 25 years of dedication to the town of Ellisville. You have shown yourself to be a professional, dependable officer at all times. You achieve success when confronted with limited resources. Your excellent ability to control situations that require police intervention have been noted by your superiors. And I'll tell you a quick story about that. I hadn't been here very long and went to back Alvy up on Main Street on a domestic. And as he was walking up, he was about 20 feet in front of me, and he was walking to the domestic, which is in an apartment back of the house. And this guy came running down the stairs of the house and was mouth to mouth to mouth, and Alvy went. And back up the stairs he went, just that, just that simple. I know I got a seen man here. You achieve success when confronted with limited resources. Your excellent ability to control situations that require limited intervention has been noted by your superiors. You can be honored for your career with Ellisville Police Department. Your professionalism, enthusiasm is second to none. Awarded this day, May 22nd, 2023, Police Officer of the Year, Alvy L. Bohal. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Great job. Chris, did you want to go ahead and handle the new business here for you since we're in the new business section? Well, let's do that.
Okay. So tonight, we want to bring forward and try to hire part-time firefighter. And then we're also going to be bringing forward three for full-time. So I'd get started with the part-time. We'd like to bring forward Sam Saft. He's been a volunteer since June of 2022. He's currently finishing up his EMT training. We'd like to bring him on as part-time firefighter. Do you guys want to proceed with that one, or you want me to continue with full-time?
I, Darla?
I think since there's four of them, it would probably be better to split them up.
Okay. So is there any council action?
I make a motion to move Sam Saft from a volunteer position to a part-time firefighter.
Second.
He was choice.
I know Dan and Scott.
Scott.
We'll let tonight have that Dan.
It wasn't me, it was Pam.
Pam was the first.
Pam made the motion, and I thought you seconded it.
Trevor and Scott was tied.
Trevor, I'm so sorry.
I gave it to Scott.
That's okay, they were doing it in stereo for me.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, so we do have a current full-time opening from one firefighter leaving earlier this year. We would like to bring forward the name Matt Seabot to fill that full-time position. He's already a PERF-77 member, so this is more like a transfer. He will go to our physical, the doctor at Public Safety Medical to go through a fit-for-duty physical. So I would like a contingent offer for him pending a recommendation from the physical.
Okay. Any council action on this?
I'll make a motion for Matt Seba to be promoted to full-time firefighter.
Second.
Contingent on approval.
Yes, contingent on PERF's approval.
All right.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next one, these are for the two new positions that you granted us to start in July. The first one will be Logan Burpo. He's been with us since December of '21 in a part-time role. Does a very good job for us, so we would like a contingent offer for him pending PERF-77 recommendation.
Okay, back to council action then.
We move that we offer conditional offer of employment to Logan Burpo, contingent to approval by PERF.
Second. William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and the last one, bring forward Brendan Johnson. He's been with us as a part-timer since August of 2021. We would like a contingent offer for full-time upon recommendation of PERF.
Okay. And council action?
I make a motion to make Brendan Johns, is it Brendan?
Johnson, yes.
Brendan Johnson?
Yes.
Full-time employment pending a favorable recommendation to the PERF-77 retiree and a favorable physical.
I'll second, all right.
What were the two, first favorable was this? Yeah, what? I'll just listen to the tape, it's okay.
Contingent upon PERF-77 recommendation.
Was that what you're?
And a favorable physical.
Gotcha.
Okay, and Pam Samples made the motion. Who seconded?
I seconded.
Okay. William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, we're jumping, there's no ordinances on the first reading, so ordinance is on the second reading. First one is 2023-04, water rate increase. We did see a presentation, I believe, as the end of the month of April. Mike, do you or anybody have, you have anything to add?
Well, I'd answer any questions, but I think it's clear that water rate increase is needed, and we're going to put it into really good use.
Okay, I have a question.
Okay, council?
I'm a little bit confused here. Okay, we're raising the water bill to help with pipes, to redo like bad pipes and whatever's needed.
We're raising the rates for many reasons, but yes, we have a 10-year plan that's part of the rate increase, and it actually lays out where and what we will do as far as replacing water pipes. Some of our water pipes are 50 years old, 50 or more years old, actually 70 years old. And so a lot of those need to be replaced and upsized to meet current standards and firefighting allows for better firefighting capabilities as well. Inflation's killing us as far as normal ONM materials, and we are building a building, and we'll have to bond for it and pay for it. And we're putting, we're going to move out of a, I don't know how old the blue building is, but it's probably 60 or 70 years old, and it's rotten to the core, and a couple possums live below us under the concrete. And I could go on and on about the building, so we just need to move into a modern building.
You probably do it for all the reasons you gave, but when you sent out the email today, it talked about the building, so that's going to be included, right?
Yeah, that's, yeah, it's included. But I mean, it's just normal to have to replace your infrastructure after so many years. We even actually have some water mains that were not concrete lined, and so they have tubercles in them, and so their fire flow capabilities are probably reduced by half. So we're going after the oldest stuff. One of our, one of our projects, one of the larger projects is probably going to cost about, oh, I'd say about $380,000 is to replace the line from Bank Road and Stars Road back into town. That's probably one of our oldest lines, and it's where we used to get our water when we had our own wells before, like, so.
Yeah, see, I understood all that, but when you sent out that email today and kept talking about the building, I was like, is it included? Somebody is, right?
Well, the building, yeah, I mean, I mean, really, you know, the most important thing is to keep our water infrastructure in prime condition, and but you have to house the workers and equipment, and I think the building goes along with what we're trying to achieve here in Ellisville, so.
Any other council discussion or comments, questions? Okay, any public? Seeing none, goes back to council action.
Move that we approve ordinance 2023-04, a water rate incre, water rate increase.
I'll second.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And Mike, just to, after, I was looking and talking to people from other towns. They were saying that the cost of not fixing the infrastructure is exponentially higher than doing what we're doing. So as an example, if a water line breaks, what, how does that emergency call? I mean, that's a lot more expensive than just replacing it normally, isn't it?
Well, yeah, I mean, we keep track of where, where and when we have main breaks, and I've been here, I don't know how long I've been here, 25 years or more. So, you know, we pay attention to problem
Right.
water mains, and so they get the most attention. And so sometimes a point repair is good enough. But for instance, Smith Pike, that's on our list of water projects. There's got to be, since I've been here, there's got to be 40 or 50 clamps on that main. It sounds like a lot, it is a lot, but it's going to cost a lot of money to replace it. So you just kind of have to weigh, you know.
Guess I'm saying the cost of waiting and kicking the can down the road could be quite a, quite a bit expensive.
Well, yeah, and anything we're doing now costs twice as much as it did 10 years ago.
Not to mention the loss that businesses on it according to versus the schedule.
Right. Businesses coming to look here, or even people moving, having water is probably a pretty firm prerequisite.
Well, round one of improving our water infrastructure was in 2013 when we did a bond to put a secondary water line into town. So we have a plentiful water supply since then. And just to remind everybody, we literally was running out of water during 2012. We couldn't keep our tanks full. I'd never experienced anything like that in the 53 years I've been doing this. Every, all of towns were having that same problem. So, you know, that round one of getting the secondary water line has really put us in good shape for maybe decades. But the infrastructure that's still, you know, the old infrastructure, it just needs to replace because of water quality and, as you say, maintenance. So it's not, it's not getting younger.
I appreciate the work you guys have done, utilities have done to keep us where we are.
Thanks.
All right, next ordinance, 2023-05, approving a moratorium on the construction and development of certain structures in commercial and industrial districts. Is this you, Denise, or is it Mike or Darla?
Denise can correct me if I say anything that's incorrect. As the town council is aware, you have contracted with the Taylor Group to do a number of projects for the town, one of which is to revise the town's planning and zoning code and to combine it and organize it into a unified development ordinance. And the town has some businesses or features that are defined in its definition section of the code, but they're not really used in the code anywhere. And then there's also some businesses that might pop up for which the town has no definition or the code has no place to put them right now. And so Denise thought, and I concurred, that it might be helpful to have the council issue a moratorium on the building of certain facilities or businesses until the unified development ordinance can be completed. And there's a clear definition for certain businesses in the code. So specifically, the Plan Commission passed this proposed ordinance with a favorable recommendation. And if the council passes this, then there's going to be a moratorium on the development of many storage facilities, gas stations, convenience stores, vape shops. We're calling them head shops, but I guess it's really, that's probably not the right word. Tobacco shops and adult entertainment businesses. Paraphernalia shops is a better word for it. But in any event, that's the whole purpose of this ordinance, and there is precedent for this because the city of Kokomo did the exact same thing when they were redoing their planning and zoning code, so.
Council discussion on this?
I have a question. Okay, you were in planning, and we talked about, we had it till February.
Yes.
Didn't sometime we want to make it later?
Yes, and Pam has reminded me that when the Plan Commission passed it on the last page, under the now there for clauses, the Plan Commission passed it with the amendment that there would be a moratorium until February 1st, 2024. It probably should be even later than that because upon revisiting the contract with the Taylor Group, they don't intend to really get started on the UDO until February 1st. So what do you think, Denise? I mean, what should?
I would, I would agree with that.
Okay, do you have a date in mind, or just March, April?
Do we have a time limit? Is there a certain length?
I don't think you have to if you don't want to, or we can just say until the UDO is passed, until the town adopts the new unified development ordinance.
I think that'd be best because I think the UDO is going to be a lengthy process, so that way we don't have to come back and have the ordinance modified.
Can we change where the, where the town votes on it? Because that is implicit that we're passing it, and I don't want to presume.
Under the code, the town council does have the authority to amend or reject the proposal. If you amend it, it goes back to the Plan Commission, and if they, they approve it, it will pass as the town council approves the wording, if that makes any sense. And since you have two Plan Commission members, three Plan Commission members here, I think I, it's fair to say.
If you're okay with that language.
Yeah, I don't think the Plan Commission would have any heartburn with it if the date was changed. Do you stand to hear? Okay.
And this would not impact, is there anybody in process right now that would be freezing, finishing their? I mean, I don't want them in the middle of building.
No, the last storage unit constructed is ready for, close to ready for certificate occupancy.
Okay.
And there aren't any in the plan, I've not received any plans at this time.
Okay.
Dan, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm fine, but I mean, either way, even if we're leaving at the current date and don't change it, we can all yet to revisit it once that date has come and go from there. So either way is fine with me. So I just want to quickly make some clarification here and get some clarification. So we are now in May, and we're essentially requesting almost a year-long moratorium.
Because originally, wasn't this discussed at six months?
Well, I don't remember the exact time limit, but there was, I think in my first draft, well, my first draft, I think we said that the moratorium would last until the UDO was passed or until October 1st of this year.
I requested, sorry, I requested later than October 1st because we haven't started the UDO yet. The comp plan's not finished.
Right.
Yeah, and I know the UDO, Taylor Super Group wants to go through it with the Plan Commission, basically a chapter at a time. So it's going to be a lengthy process.
I'd like to add, the Taylor Group had nothing to do with this. I mean.
No.
Yeah, and I fully support the moratorium. I, I see no downside to it. I'm not usually in favor of the government telling people what to do, but in this case, this is business for the town, and this moratorium is temporary, and it gives us time to maximize advantages to land use in the future. Our town's just not got land everywhere, and I just think we need to decide how we want our town to grow, and I just don't see any downside to it.
Clarifying for just a minute. So, and again, I'm not knowing if there's any vacancies, but let's pick Richland Plaza. Does this prohibit one of these businesses from going into Richland Plaza even though that structure is already constructed and sitting vacant? Or is this simply a moratorium on new construction?
I don't think it would prohibit it because we wouldn't have a say-so anyway if they went into Richland Plaza. It's already construction. We would just be contacted for signed permits for it.
So again, this is only new construction. So if there's another, again, I can't think of and really don't want to name structures in town that are already pre-existing and zoned appropriately currently, one of these businesses could move in there during this moratorium period. They just can't go construct a new building.
Correct, and let's say somebody decided to demo a building and then sell that lot.
That's a new construction.
Correct. So basically, I'm looking at 11 properties on Temperance. One's at the corner of Pompler and Temperance. That's what I'm looking to protect till the UDO is done. And they're all vacant, well, except for three, maybe.
Okay, so that brings the question, are they vacant structures or vacant properties?
Both. I know that three of them will be tore down.
Okay, but again, my question is, under this ordinance that you have put before us, does that include or preclude existing structures?
It precludes existing structures, existing structures. If somebody wanted to go in and open a business in an existing structure, it would be allowed. It's new construction.
Okay, and we would not hinder them in regards to the signage or anything else?
No.
So this is only new construction from the ground up?
Correct.
I think part of the concern too was there have been some concerns with Plan Commission members and audience members who've attended Plan Commission meetings about certain structures going up in commercial areas that people had concerns about whether or not maybe the code should be modified to be either more specific or a little more clarity. There should be a little more clarity in the town code as to different commercial structures going up in different areas or allowing certain things like apartments to go up in certain areas zoned as commercial. So I think even though apartments aren't part of this moratorium, I think just part of the reason for this is just some concerns people have voiced at Plan Commission meetings about building in commercial areas, so. If that makes any sense.
To certainly agree with us, thank you.
And we can certainly change the language under the ordinance to make it clear that there's a moratorium on the new construction and development.
Then.
And that pre-existing structures are not included. And if a business wants to go into a mall or a pre-existing structure and it meets the current definition of the code, it'll be allowed to go in.
Well, then let me, I mean, throw another question, a hypothetical. You have a current structure, and somebody wants to use that for a convenience store, but then also open the gas station there. The pumps and the, the tanks would be new construction, but they'd be using an existing structure. How do we factor that in? Because gas stations specifically are one of the things that we are preventing.
Well, pretty much any business is going to want to do some reconstruction inside remodeling.
Then you got the ship of Theseus thing. What's the orig, you know, you take all the parts away and replace them, what's the original? Because if they completely remodel.
I'm still on the ship of Theseus thing.
Yeah, it's a.
But I agree with you. I mean, to what degree can they remodel? I mean, what, what degree requires a building permit?
Uh, movie malls. And as for the gas pumps, that's with the state of Indiana. They have to get the permits.
No, I under, I understand that, but if we're, gas stations is one of the things. No, I understand that, but if we're, gas stations is one of the things in the ordinance that there's a moratorium on. How would the state treat that then? If they apply for permit, is the state gonna grant it even if we have a moratorium on it?
Yeah, I think that would just be a separate procedure. The state's not going to necessarily be involved in enforcing our ordinances, so.
Yeah, that's a fight between us and them, not the state.
Right, but I'm saying if the state's approving the gas, the tanks going in, and we're saying you can't have, I mean, we're not talking about it, they're using an existing structure for part of it, but not the whole thing.
Does the state approve gas tanks before they go in or only after?
Um, I don't know. They have to approve it before they go in. They look at their tanks to see the age and how the lines are, and that there's a good connection. And then they tell us what they're doing. We only get involved if they build like a canopy shell or something like that. Then they have to permit it because it'd be a roof, but other than that, the state takes care of it.
So are we then able to really do an effective moratorium on gas stations?
New construction, yes, if they go to construct a building, yes.
The building, but what about, I mean, you gotta dig up the lot and do a lot of stuff to get those gas, the tanks in there.
The building permit is step one.
Right.
So you wouldn't try to put tanks in if your town didn't approve your building permit.
Well, they may already have a structure there they're using for the convenience store, and that's all they, and they're just putting up gas pumps in the tank.
I think the new tanks would fall under new construction.
I would imagine so, because I don't know how you get them in under an existing structure, the connections and things like that, in an economically feasible manner.
Are there any connections in the ground?
Well, no, but I'm saying that they have a little shack on the back and some land.
A what?
A shack, okay. Think of the shack, yes, or something. Think of on, think of on the go that just opened up here. If there's a structure where they were, which there was, but if they just completely remodeled that, and let's say there's no gas station there before, they remodel the structure, and that's gonna be their little store. But in front of it's gonna be where the gas pumps are. That's not existing there.
They were always there.
I said, well, let's say they're not.
Oh, okay. Well, that'd be a good thing.
Yeah, but if they're not, you know, part of it's new construction, part of it's remodeling an existing structure.
Well, let's digress here and decide what we want. As far as I'm concerned, I can take a hard stand on no new businesses like that in town until we get our UDO. I know, I'm pretty sure one or two of you may have some heartburn about that, but I don't think a moratorium for a year is gonna hurt.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not against that at all. I'm just trying to figure out, we have to work, businesses can't have any clarity. And you write something like this.
Yeah, I'm saying we could be very clear and just say nothing.
Well, and to be clear, I guess to make my feelings known here, I have no issue with the moratorium. My issue is when we say we're gonna protect eleven specific properties, rather than we're gonna protect areas of town and how we develop a UDO. When we've already gone ahead and we've specked out, well, these properties, I don't know who owns those properties, I'm sure someone does, but if we're providing protection for them and not other places, I have an issue with that. I have a significant issue with that.
I get that.
I just use those as an example, but it is specific to the entire community under the jurisdiction.
I get that, but again, when we put forward, in an open meeting, we're protecting eleven properties. I'm gonna take it at that.
I get that.
This is not just about, for me, this is not just about protecting the properties. I think we want to protect the kind of economy we encourage in our town.
I get that completely, but when we use the word protection for properties we don't own, that doesn't sit well. Protecting from what? And I'll let that just be a rhetorical question, and I'll expect an answer to it. So I get the whole UDO, and I'm in support of that, and I'm frankly in support of the moratorium. I'm bothered by some of the wordage and some of the verbiage that's been used and the intent potentially behind this. But again, I'll let that be rhetorical as well.
Well, I think the intent is innocent enough. We just want time to get a new UDO together, find out what the town, especially the board, wants and the Planning Commission wants, and put that all together so we can move forward.
I get that completely. I mean, that was a conversation you and I had several months ago.
Any more council discussion before I open up the public comment?
If we're making changes, are we gonna be allowed to vote on it tonight?
Well, that was going to be my question. And maybe the council wants to hear comment from the public first, but the council will need to tell me what your pleasure is if you have suggested language that we can put in this, or do you want to just reject it and send it back to the Plan Commission for their additional thoughts?
I would rather open up to public comment if there are any, if there is any, and then we can discuss.
Yeah, I'd like to say something too.
Okay.
I think we're giving it too much thought, really, because this is something that's only gonna be less than a year. And there is nothing in the process of being built right now. And if a business or a news station or anything like that comes in town, it's gonna take quite a while to get that built and all the paperwork done and everything like that. So I think, you know, if, I've been a businessman before, if I know after February or whatever I can build it, then they'll probably wait until February before they start construction on it. So I think we're just kinda dissecting this too much. I really feel that it's just a temporary nine-month thing, and it'll be over.
As long as it's new construction only, yeah. But if I, if I'm sitting on a building right now and somebody's looking at it, don't want any shocks.
I agree with you on that, but I, just new construction is what.
Again, that was my question. Is this new construction or is this existing structure?
And I feel the Planning Commission, it's just new construction. That's my opinion, you know? That's what we talked about.
And that was the intent.
Right.
Darla, are we good with that being the intent, or do we need to specifically specify that?
I think if you're making minor changes to the ordinance, you can make minor changes, pass it, and it can go back to the Plan Commission. If you want to tinker with it a little bit and say that the ordinance prohibits any new construction that requires a building permit, I think that's fine, and that will clear it up. I mean, if you want to make more substantive changes.
Can I open up to the public real quick, see if there's any?
Sure, yeah.
Is there any public comment on this? There may not be. I just want to make sure. All right.
Sorry, I thought you already done that.
That's okay, no, go ahead.
My only, the reason that drove this question was the ordinance title. Ordinance approving a moratorium on the construction and development of certain structures.
That is true, yeah.
Had it been the construction of, I'm good. But again, if we've got vacant property sitting that somebody's depending upon for their livelihood and you have a business wanting to go in there, now I got other questions.
And I think that goes back to what someone said earlier. If, take Richland Plaza, we can't, you know, tell them what they can and cannot have in that building anyway. So if they're gonna come in with a new shop of some sort, and I forget what you guys called it, I mean, there's nothing we can do because it's a building that's already been built, it's already been constructed, so.
I just want to be sure that we're on the same page that we're voting for.
Sure, sure.
Because I don't want to set up an argument or a fight or a legal fight with anybody that's holding a piece of property.
And I don't think the Planning Commission would have any problem with taking the, what was it, the part that you said?
Development.
Development. I mean, I don't personally, Sandy and, or Pam, do you?
No, I don't.
Is that a substantive change that would require it moving back?
If you're just limiting it, or if you want to change the language to say new construction in the title and remove development, that's fine. And then under the language on page two, I can change paragraph one to say the new construction, any new construction that requires a building permit, and omit the word development.
But so in existing, in existing places, if they want to put a wall or something in another wall, that would be prevented?
As long as it doesn't require any sort of a building permit, is what I'm hearing.
Okay, and, but I thought Denise said if you put another wall up, that requires a building permit?
Yeah, if it's structural, it requires a building permit.
Okay, but it's just, if it's just dividing, we use Richland Plaza as an example. There's a couple of large locations, if they want to divide it between one and another shop, they'll be able to do that?
Right, I just issued a permit to divide one back into the two that originally was the B and B spot.
Gotcha, okay. So something like that would be fine.
And they could go in that because it's existing.
Yeah, and I just want to make sure the building permit part. Okay. Any council action on this?
We approve ordinance 2023-05, ordinance approving a moratorium on the new construction, striking the words of development of certain structures in commercial and industrial districts.
Second.
You want to strike all of that? Development?
No, strike and development of.
Or development, he wants to say the new construction of. And then also the change on the second page, paragraph one. It shall now read, there shall be a moratorium on the new construction of mini storage facilities, gas stations, convenience stores, vape shops, head shop, tobacco shops, and adult entertainment businesses.
And again, I think the development just got stuck in there for like, you know, developing land or something like that.
No worries, I get it.
Did we have a second? Yes?
Yes, Dan seconded.
Yeah, I seconded.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, privilege of the floor. Anybody from the public? I forgot the Envision Ellisville update. I'm sorry. We'll go back to that. Dan, do you have update?
Last Tuesday, there was a community town forum here at the town hall, and there was a presentation by Haley Rourke of the Taylor Group. There were close to sixty persons, somewhere between fifty-six and fifty-eight persons probably, that were present, and it was very well received, lasted about an hour, and several of the people from the town were here.
Great.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, flood report, anything on that?
Well, yeah, I hope to have. I hope we put out the bid next meeting. I think we have the easements we need, and I hope to put it out at the next meeting.
Awesome.
The bridge, refresh on memory, do you know when that's gonna, you're gonna start on that?
Pardon?
The bridge, when are they gonna start on that? I know we talked about it last meeting.
2024.
I, the one that you signed the agreement on?
Mm-hmm.
I don't think it'll probably start till 2025.
Okay.
I called, or they called me to ask a question about the minutes, because I sent everything in.
That was my question, are we going before then or waiting after? But clearly if it's not till 25, we'll go first, right?
Yes, we hope to be done this year.
All right, privilege of the floor.
I have a question about the bids. So you want that on the next agenda? Have you advertised it?
I haven't.
What did you say?
I told her I'd let her know. I want to make sure we're ready to go. I need to talk to Darla, talk to Andrew Miller, and we do have to post a 10-day notice.
Well, but it was three weeks before the next meeting, so I guess if we hustled and got it in the paper, that's what she's probably asking about, is do we have time to get it in the paper for the public notice?
We got some time, so.
Okay, so you'll let me know whether you want it on the agenda, and you'll send me a copy of the publication.
Okay, now, again, privilege of the floor. Is there anybody that hasn't spoken that wants to say anything? Seeing none, supervisor comments?
Sure, today, we always have a department head meeting, the day of a meeting with the town board. So today, we had a visitor, Indiana State Treasurer, Dan Elliott, came to visit. And I wasn't sure what to expect, but he is a really nice guy, seems to be real smart and personable, and we really had a good meeting with him. He stayed an hour and a half, I think. So I just wanted to mention that they stopped in to see us, and he did have some news. His son's gonna move here and he's bought a house, and so it was a really good meeting of us.
Awesome.
I was impressed.
Jimmy?
Thank you, appreciate it.
Chris?
Thank you for the hiring. One last thing is, we're working with the police department on the Fourth of July celebration plans. Hope to have some, we have dates, but we're just waiting on a permit to come in, so I'll release all that stuff soon. That's it.
And Kip had emailed the council and said he had nothing on it, so Denise?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Sandy?
I can't think of anything either.
All right.
But I, I, no.
Okay.
I'm gonna be gone at the next two, the two, both June meetings.
Okay.
But I will have the position covered.
All right. So, council comments on anything? All right, seeing none at this time, no other business for the council. We're adjourned.